All right, I will call the Finance and Law Subcommittee to order. It's Wednesday, January, yes, I wish, it's Wednesday, February 3rd, 2021. And I'll do a roll call, Mr. Fiore, I believe is absent, Mr. Souza.
Present.
And myself, present. We also have in attendance, Mr. Cabral and Ms. Monahan. First item on the agenda is student activities, and again, once again, because of COVID, there aren't any. Second item is a recommendation for our transportation bid, and is an attachment that Ms. Monahan has put together, so maybe she could dwell on that a little bit?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Martin. Good evening, everyone. As you will see, there's a memo that is attached with the recommendations for awarding the transportation bid, and I'll briefly read the memo, and just so you know that we posted our bid on December 9th, 2020, and the bid specifications were sent to 37 companies. Seven bus companies of those 37 attended the December 17th virtual bidders meeting, where bidders could go ahead and ask additional questions about the transportation bid. The bid was opened virtually at the Finance and Law Committee meeting on January 20th, and only one bid submitted by H&amp;L Bloom, which is our current transportation vendor. If you see in the memo, you will see that I have placed together the cost increase for the current Bloom transportation contract for over the past five years. And if you look at the very bottom, starting bottom up, so from 2015 to 2016, you'll see that was a previous contract, so if we go ahead and look at year one of the five-year contract, which is 2016 to 2017, if you see the difference between the two, being awarded, again, the current five-year contract, there was an over $1 million increase in the bid. And then, as you'll see, the gradual increase each year, I don't have to read that to you. And then, of course, last year was a COVID year, so we really couldn't say, we couldn't, that wasn't comparing apples to apples. And then, right now, for 2020, 2021, our current projected budgeted cost for transportation, we have this $8.4 million, which is an increase for about $324,000 of the previous year. So when our current contract was awarded, again, the current contract that we are in, and now in 2016, the increase from the previous years was $864,860. In hiring our transportation consultant, Mr. Labrie was able to gain interest in Taunton's contract by having more transportation companies attend the virtual bidders meeting. Although we've only received one bid, the overall increase is significantly lower than the initial year of the previous contract. As also noted on the summary document provided by Mr. Labrie, also attached with the memo, the FY22 bus transportation rate is $385. It is well below the FY21 Massachusetts average of an average of $408 per day per bus. So our recommendation is to go ahead and award the bid to H&amp;L Bloom. Any questions?
Mr. Souza, any questions?
I have a few comments, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna read from the document, because I've read this a few times, have a good handle on it, and I, this is the third bus contract that I've been involved with, so I've got a pretty good handle at this. I think there's a couple of interesting points, and the point is, the $385, excuse me, $385 a day for the big yellow bus, it's below, it's still currently below the state average, and it's remarkable, under these current conditions that we live in, and but in the financial aspect of COVID and everything. And the increase for this year coming, if we accept this contract, is $324,000 for the total contract. And that's it's a little bit of an increase, but nowhere near where we thought we were going to be. And I'm just trying to find the portion where it says it talks, oh, let me, let me just read this portion of Mr. Labrie's Mr. Labrie's document summary, executive summary here. Doing our due diligence, we have learned that several union contractors did not think that they were completely bid against a non-union contractor, H&amp;L Bloom. Two others indicated that because they were the low bidder in other communities, they were unsure of being able to recruit and retain sufficient drivers for a contract of this size. So I asked the question last week about only having one bidder, and I think it's becoming very clear to me what happened, and that is that there was a lot, there was a few other contracts going out, and a couple of people didn't want to bid because they probably couldn't fulfill it in, in time for July 1. And then, they also too had to do with the various districts also with the other wage, different wages that they would have to pay down here or up in Boston, so that was, that's an interesting statement as part of his executive summary. So as far as the recommendation goes, just checking my card, my bid, my, I'll move that the we accept the recommendation, adopt the recommendation, and award the bid to H&amp;L Bloom per, per the per the bid received by the administration at the last meeting, and authorize the, oh, two things. First of all is have the con, have a contract drawn up by our legal counsel, every, all the contract reviewed by legal counsel, and authorize the chairman of the school committee to sign it on the school committee's behalf, once the legal document has been drawn up by legal counsel. That's the motion.
Is that your motion, Mr. Souza?
Yes, it is.
I'll second that motion. On discussion, I just have one question, which ever since I've been working with bids, whether it's here or the TMLP, I always ask this question to the administration. We only received one bid. Is that bid, in your estimation, reasonable? I think the answer has already been mentioned. Is that bid reasonable in relation to what you expected to get for a bid? And that's my question.
I'll be happy to answer that real quick. So I, I think when you analyze the increase from the previous time we went out to bid, Mr. Martin, where we saw an increase of nearly $900,000 when we entered the new five-year contract, and I believe this current bid, the increase is $155,000, Mrs. Monahan, is that correct?
Yes, I wanted to make that correction, as I believe Mr. Souza had mentioned, it's the previous contract, so yes, you are right.
Yeah, so I would say that we did very well in utilizing Mr. Labrie's services to, again, draw competition to this bid, in order to make sure that, you know, the, the, that we got a very fair bid, so $155,000 increase, when you look at the chart that Mrs. Monahan put in the memo, is very beneficial to the school department.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral, that answers my question.
And Mr. Chairman, I just one more comment that I have. And also, by analyzing this executive summary, it also occurred to me that with that many initial 17 companies at the pre-bid and received documents, it certainly enhanced the any bidders, especially the current bidder, to sharpen the pencil, because knowing that there was competition out there, potential competition, so I think it's, I think it's, I think we made, made out, obviously, any increases hurts, but it could have been significantly more, so that, that's, that's good.
I'm all set, Mr. Souza, you all set?
Yes.
So the motion has been made to accept the recommendation to award the bid to H&amp;L Bloom, and have the legal people take a look at the contract that gets drawn up between the, the two bodies. And let's see, on a roll call, Mr. Souza.
Yes, and authorize me to sign it, once it's done.
And authorize, make that part of the motion, and authorize you to sign it. Mr. Souza says yes, Mr. Martin notes yes, so the, the eyes have it. As I said earlier, Mr. Fiore is absent. So this subcommittee is going to recommend that we approve this recommendation. Number three, bills payable, we have a bills payable total of $1,309,656.49. And that's make, broken into two pieces, one is $600 for FY20, and the other one is FY21 of $1,309,056.49. For some reason, they haven't got it in front of me, those numbers look awful familiar to the last bills payable.
I don't think it was that.
You're on mute.
If I had a dollar, all right. I just want to make a quick comment on page two of the warrant. You, you will see that I am listed for reimbursements, I just wanted the committee to be aware that those are reimbursements that I am entitled to per contract.
Duly noted. Mr. Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one, one, Ms. Ms. Monahan. My figure is the phone rings. Hold on just for a second. Okay, she got it. Ms. Monahan, the South Coast Collaborative, $849,000, which is page?
You're on mute, Mr. Souza.
David, you muted?
You're on mute, David.
It never happens to me, imagine that. All right, I gotta start again, page 16.
Thank you.
And it starts on 15, I think, with South Coast Collaborative, 849, 849.
Why 5-0?
Trying to stop it. South Coast Collaborative, so it's like, you know, almost two pages, so how does that work? Is that a quarter, is that two quarters? It just, and I know we have this for a lot of students, so is it just one quarter for a bunch of students? I'm just curious.
It depends on which one you're referring to, if you look on page 14, the first three are just November, and it's for specific services for our student. And then, as, again, all the first ones, it looks like the first eight to 10 are services for a student. And then, as you get down to the bottom of page 14 and continue on to the following pages, that's where you will get each invoice for one student for the quarter, which ranges from January through March. So the beginning of the South Coast Collaborative are just services, so smaller amounts, and then as you get further into, into what you will see, that it is a quarterly payment per student for three months.
So the, the tw, the, the ones that are all grant-funded with the, because the ones that are all grant-funded, that, a $22,000, $21,000, that's one, that's three months, one student.
Correct, and that is done, paid by, through a circuit breaker, yes.
Yeah, so the circuit breaker, yes, I see that. Okay, I, I was just curious on how that whole, 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 that, you know, like, every, every year or six months, I gotta get that refreshed in my mind exactly how that works, because when you look at it, you say, jeez, is that a month, is that three, is that, that's a quarter, and we pay them quarterly. The other services, the lighter services, where I call it the lesser value, we pay them monthly, and we still pay them quarterly as well.
Pay them monthly is when their services are rendered.
Right, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'll approve the warrant in the amount of $1,309,556.49, as presented.
That motion, and I just have one question on discussion, it's not really a question, it's an observation. I imagine we'll see more circuit breaker tuitions, prepaying them for next year, we're already into the second half of this year. So I imagine we will start to see some more of these types of large amounts to pay for tuitions for FY22.
Correct, and I am working with the special ed department, especially with Motta Grant, who works very, very hard on circuit breaker, and yes, we will be working, we have been in conversations this week about coming up with the next fiscal year as well, so yes, you will be seeing more of that.
Believe it or not, we're already getting ready for the next budget.
You bet.
All right, a motion has been made in second to accept the warrant in the amount of $1,309,656.49. Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Martin votes yes. And that's it for the agenda, do Mr. Souza, any other questions?
Any, any, do we need any building updates?
Do we have heat at Mulcahy?
We have heat, they are still working on it, I actually have another meeting coming up tomorrow morning.
And there's no cost to us on this, I hope.
No, there is not, it is all covered under the project, and our OPM is working diligently with the companies to get this rectified.
At this rate, I'll be signing off on that build, I won't be, so the next chair will be signing off on that building.
Let's be optimistic.
Optimistic. Motion to adjourn Finance and Law.
Motion has been made in second, and Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Martin votes yes, we are adjourned. Thank you, Steve, thank you, Brenda, thank you, John.
Okay, call the meeting to order, good evening, everyone. Mrs. Fagan, if you could please do a prayer in the roll call.
Yes. For the prayer, Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy, and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to the community and to the young people entrusted to our care. And on the roll call, Ms. Darvity?
Here.
Mr. Palowski?
Here.
Mr. Fiore, not here, I guess Mrs. Fagan's here. Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yeah.
Mr. DeMello?
Present.
Mr. Souza?
Present.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Present.
And one other thing, Mayor, we have a couple of moments, where we need a moment of silence for two individuals. For, first one is for Robert J. Martin, who passed away on January 18th. He was the first assistant clerk of the Bristol County Superior Court for 33 years. He was also the husband of Shirley Martin, a longtime math teacher in the Taunton Public Schools, which I'm, I, I know much, one of my sons had her, I'm sure Mr. Martin, your children might have had her also, wonderful math teacher. And Mr. Martin will always be known for his, he loved to wear the plaids and fly the colors, and he was certainly a very colorful dresser, I think he bought every piece of plaid there ever was, and on top of that, he was a very nice man, so we extend sincere sympathies to his family, his wife and his two children, his grandchildren. The second one, this is a tragic one, this is Patrick D. Halverson from North Brookfield, Massachusetts. He is the 17-year-old nephew of Judy Mulrooney. He passed away on January 31st, 2021, from a glioblastoma, which is a brain cancer. He was active in the ROTC program, and our thoughts and prayers also go out to his family. A moment of silence, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Approval of the minutes of January 20, 2021?
Almost.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, none opposed, so voted. And we have our student council representative with us tonight, Aisling Campbell, welcome, Aisling, thank you for joining us. We are eager to hear about your report.
Good evening, Mayor O'Connell and members of the school committee. Student Council has been working hard to plan a safe MTS event. We successfully announced our contestants for this year over Instagram. Students are thrilled that we were able to hold this event. The live reveal of the contestants was shown on Tiger TV. We hope to live broadcast the show for everyone to watch together. Students and staff will be able to vote for the desired contestant through Twitter and Instagram. Then the winner will be announced live. The contestants have been meeting through Google Meet to prepare, to prepare for the event. The first semester is coming to a close this week, students will be taking their finals tomorrow and Friday. These days will also be half-days, then students will begin their new classes starting this coming Monday. That will complete my report, thank you.
Thank you, Aisling.
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, so voted. Public input, Mr. Souza?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Wednesday, February 3rd, 2021, Taunton School Committee meeting, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law Section 3818, and Governor's March 15th, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public meeting of the Taunton School Committee is being conducted via remote participation. No interest in attendance of members of the public will be permitted. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this public meeting will be held remotely with no physical meeting location. Those seeking to provide public input shall do so using the methods listed below. The meeting will be aired live on the Taunton Educational Network, Comcast Channel 9, and Verizon Channel 23 in Taunton. The meeting can also be viewed via live stream at the THS TV Studio Castas TV account. A recording of the meeting will be made available on the aforementioned THS TV Studio Castas website, as well as the Taunton Educational Network's YouTube channel at the THS TV Studio on YouTube. It also will be rebroadcast multiple times in the Taunton Educational Network cable channel. Public input via phone, 508-821-1221, that should be, the number should be on your screen right now. It's 508-821-1221. Please be patient, leave a voice mail if necessary. Also, if you're providing public input, please provide your name and your address for the public record, your name and your address, and you're limited to two minutes. And public input via email prior to the meeting is www.tautonschools.org. Use, use email subject line, "Public Input," include your name and address for the public record. This, this meeting will be recorded and posted on the Taunton Public Schools website at www.tautonschools.org. And as of right now, we have no public input via email. And I will wait two minutes to see if there's any public input via the telephone. Ms. Monahan, I'm assuming right now we have none? Okay, so we'll wait two minutes, and then we'll move on if there's no calls via the telephone.
Thank you, Mr. Souza.
Mr. Jakes, we need to come up with some waiting music, I think would be appropriate. Maybe Jeopardy, in honor of the late Alex Trebek.
I can sing a couple of songs, if you like.
Solo, Greg, solo, we can't hear you.
The short version.
Very short.
I have two minutes on my timer, so Madam, Ms. Monahan, do we have any calls?
No, we do not.
Thank you very much, this is clo, public input is now closed, Madam Mayor, the meeting's back to you.
Thank you, so next we have the superintendent, superintendent's report, Mr. Cabral.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I believe one of our action items was to provide the school committee with an overview of the Special Education Summer Programming. So this evening, I have with us Amy Monahan and Jennifer Mullin, who will be filling in for Mrs. Mulrooney, as we have learned earlier today, is mourning the loss of her nephew. So without further ado, I will turn things over to Ms. Monahan and Ms. Mullin, who will walk us through the great work that took place this summer, which was a summer program unlike any before, because we didn't have a playbook on how to plan and design our summer program for our neediest learners. So with that said, I'll turn things over to Amy and Jen, and then I will walk you through my superintendent's report, and I do have Nurse Regan and Mrs. Perry here to talk, to help me in presenting a section of my superintendent's report regarding vaccination plans and our continued examining of pool testing in the Taunton Public Schools. So I will turn my mic off and let Amy and Jen take the stage. Steve, you have the presentation to share? Thank you.
All right, good evening. So you are correct, Superintendent Cabral, that this year was like any other for our extended school year program. So I'm going to be speaking first to the guidance we received from DUCI, containing the factors we needed to consider when developing our extended school year program. We needed to maintain the health and safety of all students in order to develop a modified hybrid program. Please keep in mind that we began developing our extended school year program in late April and May, when this was all still very new. Next slide, please. DUCI provided guidance on how to identify high-priority learners. This is a different set of criteria as compared to the fall reopening plan, in which high level of need students were considered for in-person learning. Next slide. While developing our extended school year program, we utilized guidance from DUCI, including the June 7th memo and the comprehensive summer school guidance that was released on July 1st. That was just six days before the start of our program. The criteria for high-priority students differ slightly between these two guidances, as outlined here. Next slide. So the following outlines Taunton Public Schools' extended school year determination process. Criteria was established for identifying our high-priority learners. This included students in substantially separate programs who currently had extended school year services in their individual education programs, and students who received multiple services, especially speech and applied behavioral analysis, because those services would be offered to our students in person if they were found eligible. Once this preliminary group of students was established, we made additional considerations, including our students transitioning from elementary to middle school, social emotional needs, and students with speech services. The following outlines our communication to families through our planning and phase-in process. We were keeping in mind that this was new to families as well, and we wanted to stay connected to them. Surveys and letters were sent to families to inform them of the procedures and policies that would be in place for hybrid and remote learners. Families who didn't have access to the internet or access to our Google survey received phone calls. All students had a plan outlining the schedule of services, and progress reports were sent as usual. So overall, we had a very successful extended school year program that included specific and targeted services, both in-person and remotely. All in-person learners had access to a remote classroom as well. Our phase-in approach allowed us to provide in-person learning, starting on Week 2, and a social skills group that was added on Week 3. I was continually impressed with the efforts made by the students, parents, and staff, who all made the extended school year program of 2020 a success. Are there any questions about our program?
Just a minute. Mr. Souza?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Mullin, for the presentation, and Ms. Monahan. I just have a quick question. Can we compare our special ed? Can we compare our special ed services going through the COVID year this for this year here compared to other districts? I mean, it seems to me from what I'm reading that we're far ahead of, certainly at the forefront of providing high needs, uh, high need students with, um, in, in classroom, uh, instruction. Is that fair to say?
So we don't have the actual data comparative to, to other districts. I mean, we hear what's going on in the news in some of the larger districts like Boston and Worcester and some others that have been in the news. But just from our own networking, I would say we are overall, our remote learning hybrid overall district-wide seems pretty, um, right in line with what the state wants. And in, in terms of our special ed services, um, we all worked pretty tirelessly with the support of, um, leadership, the leadership team, um, to get the services for our students. And we continue to make adjustments as necessary for individuals.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Mrs. Dougherty?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor. So, uh, to anyone who can answer the question, this represents the summer program that we had July, August, or does it represent all year long? Or what does it represent? It says school year 2020, but I don't know what the time period is.
So the, the time period for that, oh, I'm sorry. Were you, were you done, Mrs. Dougherty?
Yes. Not yet. That's my first question. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I can respond to that one. So the summer program ran from July 7th to August 6th. It's typically a five-week program, which it was as well this year. Um, we work Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. So the students have 15 days of services. And we tried to mirror everything as it would have been in a typical year in terms of how we provided those services.
So follow on if I might, Madam Mayor. So this document represents the July 7th, August 6th program or the July 7th present program? What, what does it represent?
It represents those five weeks in the summer between July 7th and August 6th, and how we were able to provide services for our extended school year program.
So the question that I have then is when we first started talking about the summer program before its inception, I, for some reason, I have the number 300-plus children participating in that program. And there was some pushback from families whose children participated in the summer program about entry into the September program. And there was a criteria checklist. I can't remember the acronym. It was a P something or other, a Department of Education checklist. It, it defined the amount of time children spent outside of the classroom with special services. I had approached you, Mr. Cabral, about that because the high priority kids were the kids with the high numbers. I'm imagining over 75, I think that was the number. If we're talking about, okay, you're shaking your head. So I'm getting this information, looking at my notes taken at that time. And, uh, the pushback from the parents was that some of their children were in the summer program, but that they were not admitted into hybrid learning or remote learning or whatever we were doing in the fall. And there was a question about lowering that criteria to accommodate more children coming into the program in the fall. And this number looks like it represents the 103-plus students, the high, high needs learners. So I, a lot of shaking of the head, so I'm obviously confused about the data. So if you would elucidate me, that would be appreciated.
It would be helpful, Amy, if Mr. Jakes pulled up slide two.
Well, I have.
So.
Can follow along as well. So I think what Mrs. Dougherty is referring to was when we started the year, she is correct, in our opening plan, uh, we did have about 300 students who came back as our high needs learners when we opened the year. And I believe in the summer, uh, the number was much lower because the criteria was different, which I believe on slide two, uh, that's where it's indicated. Anything you'd like to add, Amy, regarding that?
Yep. So in general, um, extended school year is based off regression and recruitment data of goals and objectives in the student's IEP. It is not necessarily a reflection of if a student is high need, moderate need, or low need. It's based off their performance on goals and objectives that are in their IEP. So for example, we could have a student who only has speech services in their IEP. They get two times 30 minutes per week for speech. And they demonstrate regression during breaks. So we look at regression over the summer break, over Christmas break, February and April. And that's how their, their team determines if they require extended school year. So the guidance for extended school year was based on priority, not level of need. That's different than the fall guidance. And that level of need speaks to the 75% of services and think the, the 300 people, the 300 students you were referring to, Ms. Dougherty. So extended school year is something we do every year, regardless of COVID or not. It's based on data from their, their IEPs. For this year, we had to worry about the, the health and safety of our students, the distancing. So we prioritized students. Now, I do understand families were concerned if they, they, they thought that if they had extended school year, that also meant they were high need or met that high need criteria for the fall reopening. Why? That's true in some cases, but not in all cases. Does that explain it a little bit better?
A little bit better. So just two more things real quick, Madam, um, Mayor, if you don't mind. What, what is that P something or other, which is the 75-plus ranking, the rating?
So that is called the placement page three. So that.
Three.
Yep. PL three, place, yep. So.
PL three, that's it.
That is used for districts for data collection only. That's not typically a form we send home to families. So D E S I gave us that criteria to help because on that page, there's level of need, and that's determined by the amount of service in the IEP, which is determined at the team meeting.
Thank you. Uh, so this is a reflection of the summer. I do have a lot of questions. I'm not going to take more time of the school board on this, and it's based on a conversation that I had many months ago. And so I just need to clarify some of that information for myself, and I'll meet with Mr. Cabral or somebody, uh, over the course of the next few days. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mrs. Dougherty. Mr. DeMello?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Ms. Moynihan and Ms. Mullen for today's, uh, update. I also want to thank you for last week's presentation that I was able to attend on the IEP documents that yourself, Ms. Mullen, Ms. Moynihan, and Mrs. Mulrooney gave a very thorough presentation on IEPs and what that's all about. So I appreciate the community outreach that continues to go on. Uh, my, my concern or my question is, are we scheduling a CPAC meeting coming before the school committee anytime soon? Uh, or is that their call to reach out to us? How does that work? Mr. Cabral, maybe?
Usually the CPAC schedules their meetings, and they've been utilizing our platform, uh, Zoom.
But I'm saying, don't they usually come before the school committee for some needs or some wants?
Um, I don't recall, I don't recall in the last three years of them coming before. I know they have their meetings in a bit in school committees can attend because it's a public meeting and they can express, share their concerns. I think the last time that they came before us was when we established a revolving account for the school.
Right, which we, yep, which I.
Right. I, I think that I, and again, I'd have to go back and check the minutes with Mrs., Mrs. Divine. But I believe that was the purpose, was to establish that revolving account. But I, I know when they have their meetings, it's usually a general meeting. People from other communities can attend, the school board members can attend. So it doesn't have to be a formal meeting with us.
Okay. I thought there was maybe an annual requirement to come before the school committee or some, maybe I'm confused. But anyway, thank you so much for the community outreach last week and again, coming before us today. Thank you.
And if there is an annual requirement, I will have the Special Education Department look into that, Mr. DeMello, because I want to make sure that we are following the regulations.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Cabral, is that it for your report, or do you have something further?
Uh, that concludes this part of the presentation. So Mrs. Moynihan and Ms. Mullen, you're free to leave. So thank you for being here. And I will check in tomorrow regarding CPAC and the regulation. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, ladies, on behalf of the committee. Thank you for, thank you for attending.
So in my superintendent's report, I begin with the release of the preliminary fiscal 22 budget. So in your packet, I provide you with a high-level overview. And Mrs. Moynihan and I will put together a more detailed presentation to really help you understand the figures that are in this narrative portion of the budget message. So Governor Baker's FY 22 budget decreased by about 1%, point oh seven, from the previous fiscal year. And again, that's due to revenue projections being lower than expected due to the pandemic. And if you recall, last year, the revenue projections were calling for four to $6 billion in shortfall. So luckily, Massachusetts has been able to manage the pandemic quite well, and the deficit is not what they originally projected last spring. So the chapter 70 increase amounts to about 198 million, or about 4% increase. Uh, what is troubling to me in many superintendents, and we will voice this concern to Commissioner Riley, is that overall, the state enrollment decreased by almost 31,000 students. So as you have heard me year after year after year, and Dr. Hackett, year after year after year, state, foundation budget is all predicated on enrollment. So the fewer students in our school system, the fewer dollars we receive in the form of chapter 70. So in Taunton's case, our enrollment decreased by 160 students. So doing quick math, that's about $2.1 million in chapter 70. I'm sorry, $2.1 million, when you multiply that by the per pupil, which is about 13,000 per student. And again, so of that 2.1 million, we receive 64% in the form of chapter 70. So that's $1.3 million that we are not getting. The city of Taunton is not getting in the form of chapter 70. So what would have been wise, in my opinion, would have been for the state to hold districts like Taunton and others harmless with regards to enrollment and not penalize us for the decreased enrollment because of the pandemic. So superintendents like myself and others will be advocating that communities that have lost students, especially close to 200 students, be held harmless in that I, than that we used last year's enrollment of fiscal 21, fiscal 19 enrollment. And again, all those numbers are played out for you in this narrative portion. What I will say is right now, our chapter 70 increase is 1.8 million. If we would have been held harmless, that figure would have been 3.1, not 1.8. So again, 1.8 is what the increase is now for chapter 70. If we had been held harmless, we would have expected to see about $3.1 million. And that also impacts the city's contribution as well. So again, myself and urban superintendents throughout Massachusetts, we will be advocating and appealing to our delegates, into the commissioner, into the Board of Education, to advocate that communities be held harmless. As we know, that 30,000 students didn't just disappear. Those students will be coming back to our school system, and we need to be able to account for those students. So that's the first portion of my report. The second portion of my report regards advocacy. Advocacy that we in Taunton have been leading the charge. And I, and again, this work started with Dr. Hackett and it's work that I'm proud to continue. So last week on the 26th, I had the pleasure of going before the Board of Education to present testimony advocating for change, needed change, to the entrance criteria in, in our vocational schools, as well as advocating that comprehensive high schools like Taunton with successful vocational programs be allowed to expand offerings, new offerings, as well as offerings that have wait lists. So the changes we are looking to see would impact changes to the, the weight or the weighting of a student's grades, your discipline record, their attendance, and the Guidance Council's recommendation, as well as the interview as part of the entrance criteria. And again, we also urge vocational school, the Board of Education, to encourage and allow comprehensive high schools to continue expanding our chapter 74 programs. And the rationale behind that is, one, if you miss out on that opportunity as an eighth grader, you don't get a second bite of the apple. And two, we have a lot of students who are new to Taunton, students who are new to this country, who come in as high schoolers, who are not afforded the opportunity or miss that opportunity to participate in vocational programs. So that is testimony that I provided, testimony that I've included in the packet, if you wish, if you wish to read at your leisure. And the second, the last portion of my report, before I talk about some superintendent notes, is regarding our continued work to provide a vaccination clinic here in Taunton. And Mrs. Perry can talk a little bit more about the logistics and the work that she's done with Brewster at Taunton High School, and as well as our continued work to review and look into pool testing as a mitigation strategy to make our schools safe for students and staff, and as an opportunity to bring more students back safely into our schools. So Mrs. Perry, would you mind just talking briefly about the work you're doing to turn Taunton High School gym into a vaccination center for our staff?
Sure. So thank you. Good evening, everyone. I have been working closely with Nurse Manager Karen Regan and, as well as Brewster Ambulance. And so we ended up meeting over at the field house because it is our plan to then have the operation take place at the field house. So presently, we have, um, I, I think you all know, we started with a survey to see how many staff members would be interested. And we had an overwhelming response. We had over 1,100 responses with over 900 staff members wanting to get the vaccination. So we then reported those numbers to Brewster and put our order in. In addition to meeting with Nurse Manager Regan, Mark Otavio Nelli, Matt Meadows, and also Heather Galant from the Board of Health, we met, um, over at the field house to decide how we were going to set up so that it would be efficient and still offer people plenty of time, plenty of space to be able to get the vaccination safe, safely. We are, we've got everything all orchestrated. All we're waiting for right now is the vaccine. We've got our volunteers in place. We've got, we even have refreshments all ordered. Everything is ready to go. We're just waiting for the vaccination. It'll be a very smooth process. They'll enter through the doors in front of the field house. There'll be four tables set up. They'll come in and register at the tables. They'll then move into the gym. Once they're in there, they'll then, there'll be four stations that will be vaccinating. Once they receive the vaccination, they'll then move on to another area where they, where they will be seated for about 15 minutes after they receive it. Brewster Ambulance will be on-site in the event that anyone has, um, any sort of reaction. And so our plan is to complete this, you know, um, we're hoping on a Saturday and a Sunday. And according to all of our, um, all of our reports, we're going to be able to do about 500 people a day at the field house. So we're ready to roll. We're just waiting for the vaccine.
Thank you, Mrs. Perry. So before I turn things over to Mrs. Regan, Nurse Manager Regan, to talk about our work regarding pool testing and the strategies that she currently has in place, I just want to mention that again, I continue to meet with the state, continue to meet with superintendents who have implemented this process. Mrs. Perry and Nurse Manager Regan has also met with some individuals from school systems that are implementing this to learn more about the strategies and the effectiveness. I also continue to reach out to agencies, had a very positive call today with a city agency that may be able to support us as we continue to analyze and, and inquire more information about pool testing. But I also want to make it known to the public that we continue in the city of Taunton to trend in the right direction. Uh, two weeks ago, we had a positivity rate per 100,000 of 97, 10. We're down to 72, 70. And we had an infection rate of about 12% two weeks ago, and we're down to just under 9% at 8.55. So things are trending in the right direction in the city of Taunton, and it's a lot of hard work. And Nurse Manager Regan will give you a little insight, a little insight into how the contact tracing and all the measures that we have, not only in our facilities, what we put in place to make our classrooms safe, but what happens behind the scenes with the contact tracing, which continues to prove to be very, very effective. So Karen, I'll turn things over.
Thank you very much. Yes, it is true. Our numbers are trending down. On a weekly basis, I collect data and it's called our dashboard. It is posted on the Taunton Public School website. Several weeks ago, we were having 34 positive students diagnosed in one week. That's the week ending Jan. That's the week ending January fifteenth. The week ending January twenty-ninth, which was my latest information, we're down to twenty-three. So we've gone from forty-two a week to twenty-three students. Also, we have leveled off on the children that are quarantined. Our number of employees that are quarantined several weeks ago, it was thirty-one in one week. Now we're down to sixteen. And the data I've collected so far this week appears to be trending in the same direction. It should be even better than last week's, but I still have two more days of data to collect before I can say that it is better. I'd like to go over with you what the nursing department is doing, provide a safe environment for our staff and our students. Seven days a week, every morning, I speak with Heather Galant, who's the director of our health department. Takes about thirty to sixty minutes. And what we do is, we look on Maven, which is the state's database for lab results. It has all the infectious diseases, but we focus on COVID-nineteen. It has both the positive and the negative results. And I'll tell you in a minute why it's important, but the negative results. What I do is, we look at all of the positive cases, ages three to twenty-two, because that's the ages of our students. I then go into our database to see if the students are our students, whether they're remote or they're in school. We identify all of them. We then contact the parents, and most times, we are the first ones to tell the parents that their child has tested positive. So we share factual information with the parents, whether it's quarantining or isolating. And most of the times, these parents, and even our teachers that we contact, are very appreciative of the call. So we start out identifying cases, whether it's because someone has one of the eleven symptoms that the Department of Public Health has identified. There've been a close contact, which is that they were within six feet of an individual for fifteen minutes or more cumulative, within twenty-four hours, which is very strict, or they tested positive. So we open the case up and we follow it for as many days as they need. But what's really important and time-consuming, but we think is very important, is that we also look at the negative cases. Because if a person has symptoms, they may be required to have a test. So for them to come back into our schools, whether it's a student or a staff member, they have to have those results. So if we find the results on, over the weekend, we do contact the staff, or we contact the parents, to let them know that the results are negative, and they are able to come back on Monday. So that's really important, we think, because we want to have our students back as soon as we can. So they're very happy about that when we call them. But that is a time-consuming project, and we think what we're doing is working. And why I say that is, we have not identified any transmission in our schools. Most of the cases we see, we can trace back to either a family event, a community event, someone else they've been in touch with, and we think that's really important. It shows that everything we have in place, from wearing masks to hand sanitizer for six-feet distance, is working. We also have not seen any clusters in our schools. So the program we have in place, again, we think is very successful, very time-consuming, but it's the best for us, for our children and our teachers. What's important to note also is that we have seven testing sites within five minutes of Taunton. We also, yesterday, we had a parent that their child was not feeling well. They called the pediatrician, brought the child in. The child was tested with the gold standard PCR by dinnertime. That parent had that result. By eight o'clock last night, all of our contact tracing was done, it was done in a very efficient manner. All of the close contacts were identified, and the parent knew what they need to do with their child and also their siblings, because it's important to note, the siblings of a positive child have to be quarantined. And the state has changed the guidance recently to what we call an eight, eleven, or fifteen day. We go over all that information with our parents and our teachers, if needed, and we have that information in five languages. And that's because of our parents, that English is not the first language. We share that in writing with them, so they understand what needs to be done. And we're very fortunate that we have several nurses that speak Spanish and Portuguese, and they're able to speak to our parents, and we also have a translation department. So all this whole practice we're doing, yes, is seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, but we know it's working. And the nurses are working very hard to ensure that. And again, we're getting a lot of positive responses from our families and from our teachers. So that's what we have in place. And Superintendent Cabral and Kathy Perry has already gone over the vaccination clinic, which I am very excited. It's all in place, we're ready to go as soon as we get the vaccine, and as soon as the governor tells us we're eligible. Right now, the phase we're in is called phase two, and that is for our seventy-five-year-olds and older. The K-through-twelve staff is phase two, but it's the third category down. So once they say we can do that, and once they say we have the vaccine, we will put the program in place. As Mrs. Perry said, we have all the volunteers ready to start the program. Okay, the other initiative that Superintendent Cabral had mentioned was what's called pooled testing. I have done some research about the possibility of implementation in our school system. I participated in several Zooms with Superintendent Cabral. I'm waiting for our last Zoom meeting, I believe, was the end of January with the Shaw Foundation, and I had asked them to contact us and let us know a district with very similar demographics who have successfully implemented it. And our plan, I believe, is for Mrs. Perry and I to visit that district to see how they implement it and any barriers, and what it would take for our in-house staffing. Because as I had mentioned right now, that what we have in place is very time-consuming for our nurses, and that's what we're focusing on. So we are looking into the pool testing, but again, we need to know how it was implemented in another system very similar to ours, so that we don't make the mistakes or the issues they had when they implemented it. So that's what I had to say tonight. Does anyone have any questions for me right now?
Thank you, Karen. So as we like to do in Taunton, identify the problem and find someone who solved it and implement. So we'll continue to work diligently on a vaccination clinic, as well as continue to investigate pool testing. And then, once Mrs. Reagan and Kathy are done answering any questions, I do have three additional points I'd like to discuss.
Madam Mayor, you're on mute.
Got it. Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. Just very quickly, so the site's set up, volunteers are there. What do we know about the vaccine? I mean, that's everybody's concern, right? What is the probability? Who can give us a better date of availability of vaccines? Because we're looking for, what, a thousand vaccines is that we're looking for?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I can answer that somewhat, based on the call we had this morning, Shauna, Madam Mayor. So as we learned from Brewster, they're required to put in their order every Tuesday by five P.M. But they don't know when they're gonna get their order. It could be in a couple of days, it could be, it could be longer. So that's one of the reasons why Brewster mentioned this morning on our call that they can't consistently schedule a vaccination clinic, because they don't know when the vaccine is going to arrive, or if the amounts that they're requesting are going to arrive. So it's one of those things right now, as we've heard throughout the state and throughout the country, that the rollout of the vaccine has not been as smoothly, and the quantities have not been what we anticipated being rolled out. But we expect that things will continue to ramp up as we get deeper into the vaccination season. And then, we also heard some good news today, that I think there's gonna be two vaccines that they'll be using in Taunton, the Moderna and the Pfizer vaccine. So that hopefully, Mr. DeMello should allow, not only the school department, but also the citizens in Taunton, to be vaccinated at a higher rate.
Because we're looking for vaccines at the university, because we're also gonna do it for our employees and our staff, and we don't have any idea either. So it's just one of those things that hopefully, everybody gets the vaccine they need. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Yeah, everyone is in the same boat, everyone's looking for vaccines. Taunton is actually doing pretty well, because we are working with Brewster and other partners. And so we have a clinic going on this weekend for our seventy-five-plus seniors, and we're gonna be able to vaccinate over five-hundred of them. But I think, as Mr. Cabral mentioned, as the vaccine becomes more available, we'll be able to do it more consistently. And it is probably gonna be a source of frustration for people, but a lot of clinics are gonna be, you're not gonna have a ton of notice, because we get the vaccine and then we have to schedule the clinic. So, I was gonna say, Counselor, Mr. Susan, do you have a question?
Not yet, Madam Mayor. You never know, though. So I'm just, on the timing of this, and we all know the vaccine issue is the feds and when they get it and how the transportation and all of that. But as far as the school department goes, a thousand people that we have on, so we're gonna have to actually wait. Right now, we're on phase two, section one, I think. And in the school department, the school department is on phase two, section three, if I remember right by reading it. Because the next phase two, section two, is seventy, sixty-five and over, and people with two comorbidities. So we're gonna have to wait till all of that goes by before we get the vaccine here, or are we gonna, is this a parallel course with the other phases? Oh, do we have to wait till section three of phase two? Nurse Reagan, do you have any, do you have an answer for that, or are we just, do we know? I mean...
Um, yes, they go through the phases of each category. So once a category is finished, they move on to the next one. So we just started phase two, category one. So yes, we do have one more category, the sixty-five-year-olds, before it comes to us. As of right now, things could change, but that's the governor's plan as of right now.
Yep. So basically, the bottom line is, the plan that they have on the DPH's website, in the COVID website for the state, is the same plan everybody's following, we just have to wait our turn in line.
Correct.
Thank you. That makes things a lot clearer. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Pulowski?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Nurse Reagan, would you please explain to us one more time, how is it exactly that you can tell that there's been no transmission within the schools?
Well, to look at transmission, what we do is, when a person is identified as being positive, especially if it's a close contact, we follow close contacts of a positive case in the school. We will monitor them through their hole until their case is closed, to see if they turn positive. So those are the types of things we'll look at, is, was there anyone in close contact of another one that then tests positive? It's more of like timeframes. So our nurses are watching that very closely in their schools, and I watch every case that comes in. I may not know that, say, Mulcahy has four grade fours. So I may see two fourth graders come back positive. I would speak to the nurse and say, is there any connection between these two children? We even look at the buses to see if they're in close contact, then six feet on the buses. That's how we would know if there was transmission in school, if we saw one child and then several days later. Usually, it's four to six days later, when you start with symptoms, come down with symptoms, and then test positive. That's what we're monitoring. We had a hundred and seventy-one positive cases in the month of December. But don't forget, that also includes our remote students. We contact the remote families also as part of our community, to share with them what quarantining and isolation means. So it doesn't mean all a hundred and seventy-one were in our buildings and were infectious. Our numbers in January have gone down a little bit to one-sixty-one. And if we continue the trend on the first three days of February, hopefully, they're gonna go down more. We think a lot of the cases were related to Christmas events or holiday events. That's how we do our tracing. Every case is opened, followed by a nurse and myself, and then closed to see if there's any connection with someone else in our school building. But most of the cases were able to trace back to a family event.
Perfect. Thank you. That makes, that makes perfect sense to me. I appreciate that explanation.
Okay. Mr. Martin?
Just to reinforce what Nurse Reagan is saying about having a clinic, all of phase one has to be complete before they move into phase two. So they've currently moved into phase two, but some of phase one is still out there, it's still open. And they've moved into the first category of phase two, which is seventy-five and over. And then they go into phase, category two, I should say, of phase two, which is sixty-five and over with two committed, whatever they're called. Thank you. And I'm in that category, just to let people know. And if you go on the state's website, you will find under frequently asked questions, that's one of the questions that's being asked. When is it going to happen? They don't have an answer. So if they don't have an answer for category two in phase two, they certainly don't have an answer for category three in phase two. It all has to do with quantity of vaccine. The more vaccine they can get, the quicker they can go through these phases. So I don't want to give anyone any, you know, hope that this is gonna happen like next week or the week after. I think it's probably gonna be closer to the end of the month or the beginning of March, before we get into that third category with teachers. And that goes to Mr. DeMello, too, with the college staff and so forth. It's just, it's just the phases that the state has established, and I don't think they're gonna change the order of the phases. I just have that feeling that they're kind of put in place, people are planning on it, and they're gonna go from there. So I just wanted to add my two cents to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. You're welcome. Okay, if we are all set, Mrs. Doherty?
Oh, thank you. Just a question about pool testing. Is there a time certain Superintendent or Nurse Reagan or somebody within which we have to inform the Department of Education that we're interested in participating in their plan? Or is that open-ended, or are we not going to participate in their plan, but go ahead with our own, if in fact, we decide to go in that direction?
We can, we can join the state's free plan anytime within the six weeks, Mrs. Doherty. And we can also utilize the state's vendors that they've procured anytime after the six weeks.
So when is the six weeks completed?
Six weeks, bear with me, I have it marked on my calendar. The six weeks begins February eighth and expires on March twenty-eighth.
Sorry, do you anticipate that you will have completed your investigation along with Mrs. Perry and Nurse Reagan about pool testing? With, in a timely way, so that if, in fact, the answer is yes, we should go forward, we can do the first six weeks free, or however long that is?
Yeah, I mean, and I hope people don't take this the wrong way. When it comes to pool testing, money won't be an issue, because I just want to make sure that we do it right. And if I had my druthers, we would not utilize the two free programs, because the two free programs, I believe, are flawed in the sense that we would have to quarantine the entire room. And then those students would have to come back and be reflex tested. So if you look at the presentation that we used last school committee meeting, the gold standard for pool testing is Miramis. Because with the Miramis testing, they can do the reflex testing without bringing the student back to be tested a second time. They'll use the existing sample. And as an urban superintendent in an urban district, we know the needs of our families and our students. And I worry about families who need to be reflex tested, not having the means or the transportation of coming back to a neutral site or to a site at their school and being tested a second time. So that's a big concern as far as the logistics piece. That's why, again, money would not be an issue when we do this, if we do this. And I also do feel, in reading the tea leaves, that if this pandemic continues into the spring and into the summer, it's most likely will be a mitigation strategy to start the school year. So that's why I want to do our due diligence, I want to partner with agencies, and we also want to investigate and learn from others, so that when we do do it, we do it right. As Nurse Manager Reagan has said, right now, what we're doing is working very, very well. So even though there is a sense of urgency to figure this out, we are doing well, and the numbers are trending in the right direction. And what's nice about our plan, too, whether you're quarantined or whether you're in person, you have access to your teacher because of the synchronous learning model that we have in place. So again, I want to make sure we do it right, because I don't want kids who are asymptomatic coming into school and possibly infecting, the teachers are infecting their classmates. So we'll get there, Mrs. Doherty, just...
So regardless, you're looking, you're giving it a close look, it doesn't matter whether it's with the state or with, independently, if it is determined that that's the direction we should go in, then we go in that direction. It seems to me, with the fine work that's being done by Nurse Reagan, Mrs. Perry, and others in terms of getting the setup ready to vaccinate teachers as soon as that is possible, these two, it's like the perfect storm, the pool testing and the vaccination coming together seems to me to make perfect sense to seriously consider having more children come into school, maybe after the spring vacation. I'm concerned about the winter vacation fast upon us, because kids are gonna be free and out of the sight of the teachers, and who knows what's going to happen during winter vacation in terms of their interaction? Sight of the teachers and who knows what's going to happen during winter vacation in terms of their interaction. Uh, out in the public. So that is a concern. And lastly, and thank you, Mayor. Uh, the dashboard is very helpful. Uh, I think that it would be, um, even more helpful if there was a. Column on that dashboard sheet that reflects at least the previous week so that we can see. The trajectory downward, uh, in this case, at first glance, it just seems to me that that, that would make sense. I mean, I can drag them all out and lay them one beside the other, but you can do that more easily with a spreadsheet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doherty. Uh, Mr. Martin and then Mrs. Almeida.
I just wanna follow up on, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanna follow up on, uh, Ms. Doherty's. Question about the duration of this, uh. Free, so to speak, uh, period of time. Uh, we don't have another meeting scheduled, a regular meeting anyway, between now and March third. So if there was a decision made prior to that, would be, Mr. Cabral, would we be having a special meeting to, uh, to, to look at that?
Yes, Mr. Martin. So if, if for some reason we needed to have a meeting, luckily we can meet via Zoom, I would have Mrs. Devine reach out to everyone and schedule a quick meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome, Mrs. Almeida.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Mr. Cabral, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but you said that money's not gonna be a, um. A problem to do this testing. Where's the money coming from?
Uh, actually, in, when the, I, we, I was pleased to learn through Mrs. Moynihan, when the chapter seventy was posted. The state also posted, and none, no one knew about it. Business managers and superintendents didn't know about it. But when chapter seventy was posted last Wednesday, they also posted an additional funding source for mitigation strategies for COVID.
Okay, so did we apply for that money?
We didn't have to apply for it. It was a, they allocated twenty-five dollars per student plus another seventy-five dollars per student. So I believe it's close to a half a million dollars that we will have for mitigation strategies, which we can apply for pool testing. So that's why, when I say. I believe in an urban district, Miramis would be the most appropriate testing to utilize. It's a little more intensive, a little more labor-intensive on our part, but again, it avoids having parents. Needing to transport their child for that reflex testing as the second test would be done in the lab with the original sample. Those are all things that, that we're weighing and that we need to take into account in our community. Again, I don't need to belabor why we need to be looking at all aspects of this.
No, I agree, but, um, who would be doing this testing? Because I think it's so difficult. Are we gonna have to hire outside source to do it?
That's why I, that's why I'm reaching out to city agencies as a potential partner. That's why we wanna research what other communities have done, cuz it's the manpower and the contact tracing that really concerns us. The software that's available, the testing that's available, that's great, but the contact tracing, that's, that's really labor-intensive. So, um. I had a great call today with a city agency that I haven't had a chance to talk to Nurse, uh, Manager Regan about. That I wanna bring up to speed with and meet with that agency, investigate some other communities and do it right in time.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So I just have three quick points that I wanna talk about, and I'm gonna go in reverse order. So I think Mrs. Doherty mentioned that, or somebody mentioned that February vacation is right around the corner. So I just wanna make families aware that February vacation, there will be no school in person or remote. From February fifteenth through February nineteenth. And we also wanna encourage and remind all our families, all our staff to, to follow. Strictly follow the travel guidance posted by Governor Baker, families and staff. I also wanna provide you an update. I think a couple of reports ago, I mentioned that superintendents in southeastern Massachusetts. We formed a little collaborative and we're gonna be providing some professional development to aspiring principals. So Taunton was able to get four seats in this collaborative. So I wanna recognize Raphael Dowd, who is the Parker Middle School Principal, Julie Pelletier, who is the Chamberlain, Assistant, Acting Chamberlain, Assistant Principal. Lisa Pereira, who is the lead preschool teacher slash assistant principal. And Elizabeth Pulowski, who is the Taunton Public Schools Elementary School Science Coordinator. They will be participating. In this work, which we believe will be a pipeline for, for superintendents or districts to utilize. To fill vacancies in our school system. So we're very excited to be working as a region to address this, um, this need. The last thing I wanna just talk about quickly and really on a high level is, uh, I think it would be foolish not to comment or not to mention. That Taunton High School has recently been in the news regarding a mural that's on display. Uh, and, and it's become a very polarizing topic. It's become a very sensitive topic, but I need to commend the high school administration. I need to commend our student body. I need to commend ISROs. We had a very powerful meeting last week in which all parties came together and were able to express their viewpoints. And all the viewpoints expressed were not in line. They were opposing and mixed viewpoints. But what was great and what was excellent to see was what we're expecting to see modeled in our community. Drawing a line in the sand is very easy to do. Just keep it up, take it down. That's the easy thing to do. But when you bring parties together and have these difficult conversations, these courageous conversations. And work together to do something positive for the school community and to do something positive for our community. I think is very beneficial and it's a great lesson that we as adults, we as leaders can model in our line of work day to day. So I'll leave it at that as there'll be more to come in the near future. So I wanna commend the high school, our students, our police department. For coming together to work together to solve this very sensitive topic. And that concludes my report.
Received and placed on file.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on discussion, Mr. DeMello.
And just very quickly, Superintendent, back on the, uh, student enrollment numbers, I'm a little bit confused. So. In October of twenty twenty. That's the count we're using, correct? For FY twenty-two? Because I, I thought for some reason our numbers were higher than what.
And again, that's, so. The hour, the enrollment that you see in the reports, Mr. DeMello, don't always align with the chapter seventy enrollment. Because they do take percentages into account for the other district students. We don't get credit for every other district student on a one-to-one FTE. They apply a percentage of, a ra- a ratio. So that's one of the reasons why the numbers are always lower than what our actual enrollment is. So, but what is important to know. Is that this year's enrollment is what they use to calculate next year's funding.
Right, which starts July first, correct?
Starts July first, correct.
Okay, so are we to be worried that? Come October of twenty twenty-one, those numbers are gonna be even lower? Is there a projection? Because of folks keeping students at home, homeschooling and other stuff like that, other factors?
Yeah, I, what we anticipate is that we're gonna see a lot of families return. I think, uh, we're, we're probably gonna see the largest increase will be in preschool. A lot of preschool parents kept their kids out, uh, because it's very challenging to teach a student, a child remote. And for fear of the, of the virus. So I anticipate come fall, we will see a higher number. But I also, thinking ahead like you, Mr. DeMello, I think we're gonna see a segment of our families. Who may opt or may choose to continue with remote learning. So.
But that, that counts though, right? The student that, that head count.
If we, uh, if we have a program or if we continue with that model, they would count as part of our enrollment. So, so I have some fears or some concerns about neighboring communities. Uh, maybe seeing this as a school choice option in creating virtual academies to pull students from urban centers, not just time.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. That's all. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, there's a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor?
Hi. 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 Hi.
Opposed, non-opposed, so voted. Uh, administrative business. Staffing report, anything for that?
Received and placed on file.
Second on discussion.
Motion made and seconded on discussion, Mrs. Fagan.
Yes, Mr. Cabral, um, I noticed there were a lot of. Uh, people going out on leave. Are we, and, and a lot of them are teaching positions? Is there, are we posting those positions like as things to finish out the end of the year, or what are we doing with those?
It, it depends on the type of leave. If it's a short-term medical leave with an end date, then those positions would be filled. Uh, with subs or with, or via coverage. If it's a leave for the remainder of the year, then we would post and fill the position depending if it's an unpaid leave. So.
Are there any positions po- posted for that right now?
Uh. I don't have my staffing report on my fingertips. There it is. So most of the medical leaves, Mrs. Fagan, will be, and, and some of them are not all teachers. But they will be covered with tutors or they will be covered with assistants.
Okay.
Okay. And if, if you want, Mrs. Fagan, we can go more into detail at another time if you'd like, cuz I don't, I don't wanna disclose too much information publicly.
Oh, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, all set?
Yep, thank you.
Motion on the floor, received and placed on file. All those in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Oh, opposed, non-opposed, so voted. Thank you. Subcommittee reports, finance and law subcommittee, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Finance and Law Subcommittee made earlier this evening when myself and Mr. Souza. Uh, absent was Mr. Fiore. Also in attendance were Mr. Cabral and Miss Moynihan. Uh, we had three items on the agenda. First one was student activities. There weren't any. Second item was kind of extensive. It was the transportation bid recommendation. Uh, Mr. Souza pointed out several things in the documents that were provided. Uh, I won't go into detail unless people have questions. Uh, I had one question myself, and that is, was the bid reasonable since we only had one bid? And that was answered by both Mr. Cabral and Miss Moynihan, and the answer to that was yes. So was it not an exorbitant amount of money going up? Uh, of course, things don't go down. Uh, but it was, uh, within what they expected. Actually, they were surprised that it was as low as it was as far as an increase. So the motion that Mr. Souza made and I seconded passed unanimously. Uh, third item on the agenda was bills payable. There were. Uh, actually, one bill's payable, one million, three hundred nine thousand, six hundred fifty-six dollars and forty-nine cents, which covered. Six hundred dollars for FY twenty and one million, three hundred nine dollars and fifty-six. Uh, yeah, three hundred nine thousand, fifty-six dollars and forty-nine cents for FY twenty-one. And that bill, that warrant passed unanimously by the Finance and Law. Uh, what was not on the agenda was affilities, uh, facilities update. And the question was asked, what's going on with Mulcahy School's heat? And Miss Moynihan said that they're still working on it. And at, at no cost to the, uh, to the city, uh, is, this is all covered by, uh, the, uh, the contractor and the, uh, HVAC people. And that's the report of the Finance and Law Subcommittee.
Motion, we accept the report and adopt the recommendations of the subcommittee.
Second. Motion made and seconded on discussion, Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items. First, uh, on the transportation, uh, portion of the, uh. Agenda. Uh, I'm, I'm a little disturbed to find, uh, on the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Uh, transportation costs listed as just COVID year, uh, through either the superintendent or assistant superintendent. Why don't we have a number there?
Uh, we didn't put a number there, Mr. DeMello, cuz it would, it wouldn't be accurate as far as what the true cost was because we negotiated a lesser cost. So if you, if you'd like, we can show what the actual number spent, but it's gonna show that we didn't spend as much from the previous fiscal year. Because of COVID, cuz we only paid thirty percent. So that was why we left that, because it wasn't a true comparison from fiscal year to fiscal year due to COVID.
Right, and, and that leads me to the next part of this transportation question. Uh, we were supposed to get monthly updates, uh, on, uh, our negotiations with the Bloom Bus Company. Back to the March and April PPE federal assistance that they were getting. Uh, that we voted in on May to pay them thirty percent. So i- it's very, very disturbing to not have a number there. And when are we gonna resolve this? We're now into FY, uh, what, twenty, I mean, we're in twenty-two, right?
Um. So I guess the question I would ask then, if I cannot resolve it with H and L Bloom, would there be a motion to have our legal team? Contact Bloom to resolve this?
Uh, you know. If, if I may, Mayor. I mean, we don't, I, I think we, we can do this. I mean, we have talented individuals. We have an assistant superintendent of finance. We have a transportation directive, uh, also, uh, that I think can, can put it on, on black and white. I mean, I don't wanna, you know, chase money by spending money.
No, but I, but if Mr. DeMello, in all, with all due respect, if we approached. Our vendor and asked them that we feel we are entitled to money and they refuse to pay it. Then we need to take legal action to recoup money that we may be entitled to. So.
Then we should not vote on tonight's bid process then. That's how I feel. If we, if we are, we can't come to a happy medium, then we shouldn't be voting on tonight's bid because I really need to know the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty numbers. That we spent on transportation, me personally, as a school committee member, representing the students and the citizens at times.
And I would, I would respectfully advise against that because we do not, uh, want to start next year without a transportation vendor. But that's, that's up to the wishes of this committee.
Well, you know, a- a- again, I'm just looking for numbers. That's all I'm looking for, nothing else. Uh, that's part one, Mayor. On part two, uh, on the warrant, on page two. Uh, Mr. Cabral, I know you have the Zoom webinar, uh, expenses under your name. Uh, i- i- it, do we have one for this entire school department, or is it specifically in your name? Is this a monthly fee? I mean. I don't know how that works.
Yeah, because we've been doing professional development and we're not gonna do it year-round. We're gonna go month to month. It will end up saving money in the end, but versus purchasing a year-long subscription cuz we're not gonna need it for the entire year. This is to support the webinars that we're doing on social justice, where a normal Zoom account. I, I think we only can handle five hundred. The webinar account allows us to have unlimited. And, uh, I'm, and you need a credit card unless you do the corporate account. And I chose not to do the corporate cuz it'd be too expensive because we're not gonna have it for the, we're not gonna need it for the year.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Mr. Souza and then Mr. Martin.
Yol to Mr. Martin.
Mr. Martin, please.
I just wanna make a statement that, uh. That I made to, uh, when I was assistant superintendent, that I would always make to the school committee, uh, and it had to do with busing. Uh, whether we approve a bid or don't approve a bid, eight thousand students are gonna show up in September. And we need to transport them. So. A decision needs to be made one way or the other. The sooner the better. Uh, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Mr. Souza, did you still have something?
I'm all set. We have a motion on the floor.
Okay, uh, yes, we do. Miss, Mrs. Fagan?
Yes, just one question. Um, you talked about facilities update. Was there a problem, there was a problem at East Taunton? Wasn't there with a pipe that broke? Am I, did I get that right?
You did, yeah. So, uh, I think it was Saturday morning or Saturday afternoon, one of our sprinkle heads. Um, defective and resulted in flooding in the fire. And I have to say, our custodians, building department. Um, Mrs. Moynihan, Principal Hoy, uh, the report on Monday looked like nothing had happened. And there was extensive water all the way down to the East Taunton Library, all the way into the main office. Uh, inches of water and we were, we were lucky. Luckily, uh, the police department happened to be driving by. And noticed the water coming out the front door because the sprinkler was over the enunciator panel. Which reports alarms to the fire department. So it could have been much, much worse. So, uh, to have to be, I was worried that we were gonna have to shut the school down on Monday.
Uh, Mr. Cabral, one, one thing. Did that, did that pipe freeze?
No, it wasn't. I don't believe it was due. It wasn't the pipe. It was the sprinkler head on a, on the fire, the fire sprinkler.
Okay, because when that school first opened, we had the, that, you remember, I don't know if you remember, but there was a pipe that froze in the library. And that ruined everything in the library. So I just wanted to make sure that somebody's checking out all that stuff to make sure it's okay.
Yeah, Mrs. Moynihan will attest that when we have cold weekends, we do send our custodians in to check the building to make sure we can open on Monday.
Lucky the police went by, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so there is a motion and a second on the floor. Do we need a roll call on this one?
I would suggest we do.
Okay.
Uh, yes, yes, we do.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. DeMello?
Mayor, uh, this is on the motion. I, I do wanna make a motion. Related to this. Is it appropriate after this motion or in the new business? Cuz I don't know where to fit it in the agenda anymore.
Um.
It, it, it would come under new business, but under the current. It, it would come into old business if it has to do with the busing because. It would be old business. My, and I don't have a problem with that. The issue would be it's not on the agenda. So can the vote take place? And that, that would be a ruling of the presiding officer at that time.
It deals, yeah, it deals with the transportation, uh, uh, cover page that we received. That is missing information. With the transportation cover page that we received, that is missing information. So, that's what it relates to.
Oh, yeah, we can do it unfinished, I think, but we'll do that, we'll get, when we get to it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. Mrs. Doherty?
Just a question about the, so we're dealing with Bloom for the previous contract and trying to make a settlement, and going to award them the second contract if the vote prevails. Does the one awarding of the contract, do you believe, will impact the continued negotiations with Bloom about settling our interest from previous?
So, so, so what, so I'll answer that. Let me be clear on.
Lieutenant first, please, Mr. Souza, if you don't mind.
If, so if I heard the question correctly, I want to make sure I'm answering correctly.
I want to know if it's going to be a bad thing.
If the school committee approves to accept the bid and award the bid to Bloom, does it impact me, Mrs. Monahan, and Mrs. Perry going back to Bloom to see if we're entitled to any funding? Is that the question?
Settling, we have, as Mr. DeMello pointed out, we expected regular reports in terms of how's it going?
Yeah, I think, I don't think, I don't think it would make, I don't think it would make an issue, but again, I would, if they don't respond to us, I think we may need to go legal if that's the route that this committee wants to take.
Well, if we have to sue them for whatever we believe, but we don't know yet what we deserve or what we should get.
I think they're going to make, they're going to make.
I'm going to ask.
Any money is what they.
Yeah, I'm just going to ask members to be very careful to, to, we may be inhibiting our legal position by stating anything to do with legal positions in an open session. So, just be very careful when we talk about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. So, your answer is no, you don't think it's going to have any impact on, the one doesn't relate to the other. Okay, that's.
Fiscal 21 is over.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Mrs. Almeida?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Could you please repeat the motion? This had to do with the Subcommittee, did it not?
Yes, there is a motion on the floor to accept the Finance and Law Subcommittee, as I understand it.
And adopt the recommendations.
And adopt her. Thank you.
And part of the recommendations is to accept the bid?
Mr. Martin?
The motion that was made in Finance and Law was to accept the bid, also to have it contract drawn up and reviewed by our legal services. We're talking about a very large amount of money. So, I would certainly want a lawyer to look at it, and also to authorize Mr., once it is finalized, to have authorized the chairman of the school committee to sign it. That was the motion that was made in Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Okay, so this motion has nothing to do with what Mr. DeMello wants to do at this point.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so if we're all set, there's a motion on the floor and a second honorable call. Vote, please, Mrs. Fagan.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Pulowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore is absent. Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
All set.
Motion carries. Thank you. The Unit A sub-teachers, excuse me, Unit A Teachers Subcommittee, Mr. Souza?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Unit A Subcommittee was supposed to meet on 2/3/21, and the meeting was canceled. That is my report.
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, want to post? Oh, you just.
It was, it was a late eye, sorry.
All right, none opposed, none opposed. So voted. Athletics Committee, Mrs. Fagan?
Yes, yes, Athletics Subcommittee met on Monday with myself, Mr. DeMello and Mr. Martin were present. We met with Mr. Otta Viannelli and Chris Kurt and Nurse Reagan, and we talked about the fall two floating season, which is supposed to start February 22nd to April 25th, with football, girls volleyball, outdoor winter track, boys and girls, and sideline cheer. And there were several relevant documents, and we have all kinds of guidelines from the Environmental and Energy Affairs, the MIAA recommendations, school COVID-19 risk waiver, the athletic safety standards, a daily attendance COVID-19 check-in sheets, transportation seating charts on the bus, and high school home spectator list. So, they've got this very well covered, and we, we accepted the recommendations. And also thank them for the continued efforts, everybody, Nurse Reagan, Chris Kurt, the whole athletic department, Mark Otta Viannelli, for really trying to give these kids some sense of normalcy and giving, giving them the things that they need as far as sports are concerned. And that's my report. And I don't know, Mr. Cabral, if you need to add anything or think anything else was relevant.
No, I think it's just important to reiterate that they will continue to follow the same protocols that we followed in the fall that we're following now, and we're having a very successful winter season, knock on wood.
Thank you, Mr. Souza.
I'm a little confused, because we have voted on each section as it has come up. And right now, this is the next section of fall two, which is February 22nd. So, is the Subcommittee recommending to the full committee that they approve this, the schedule, the four sports as presented? Is that what the?
I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear, Mr. Souza. Yes. We voted to recommend, to approve the recommendation from them.
Thank you. I thought, I wasn't sure if I missed it or not, so I just wanted to be clear. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry if I wasn't clear on that.
You're welcome. Mr. Martin and then Mr. DeMello?
I just want to point out, one of the questions I had at the Subcommittee meeting was, the protocols that are in place right now going to continue to be in place, and the answer to that was yes. And as Mrs. Cabral has pointed out, we've had a very successful winter season, even though this is called winter two. And I believe, Mr. Cabral, you said there was one cancellation, and it was not due to Taunton.
Correct. It was the visiting hockey team that we played had a positive, which resulted in Taunton having a quarantine. But, I mean, Nurse Manager Reagan, you guys know, you know, she's like a dog on a bone when it comes to, when it comes to this stuff. You know, she was able to get our kids back very quickly after, I think it was eight days, they were able to come back after being, after all testing negative. So, it wasn't due to Taunton. If anything, we have a reputation for being very strict and very conservative when it comes to this, and that's all attributed to Nurse Manager Reagan, who will not sign off on any plan unless she agrees with it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mr. Cabral.
Thank you, Mayor. As a member of the Subcommittee, I'm usually one of the more cautious ones, I guess, when I cast a no vote in the past. This time, I did cast a yes vote, and the main reason was that the MIAA Board of 22 members voted unanimously, 22-0, that this was all safe and, you know, ready to take the protocols in place. Of course, with the, our own Nurse Manager Reagan and our Athletic Director Otta Viannelli, I felt very comfortable voting yes, but the specific reason was 22 to 0 vote of the MIAA Board. So, that's five voted yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All set.
Motion to accept the report.
And adopt the recommendations?
And adopt the recommendation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We better roll call that, Madam Mayor, because it has to do with the specific, the sports and letting them approving the sport. So, we better roll call that one.
Sure, no problem. Roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan?
Yeah, Ms. Doherty?
My phone's ringing, yes.
Mr. Pulowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore is absent. Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida? Mr. Souza?
Yes.
And, oh, I just missed somebody. I'm sorry. Mr. DeMello, I'm so sorry.
Yes, Mrs. Fagan, thank you.
You of all people, I'm so sorry. All set.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, and I think we are all set with Mrs. Perry and Mrs. Reagan, and I'm sure you must be eager to go home or shut off your computers at least. So, thank you, thank you ladies very much for your assistance tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, High School Subcommittee, Mrs. Almeida?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The High School Subcommittee met on Thursday, January 28th. We met at 4:20 PM with the Taunton Alternative High School first. Present was myself, Mrs. Fagan, and Mr. Pulowski on the High School Subcommittee, and in attendance was Mrs. Doherty and Mr. DeMello. We started off the meeting by having everybody introduce themselves and explain their roles. And we met with Asia Nurse, who's a Taunton Alternative High School senior. She is currently enrolled duly at Taunton High and Bristol Community College. And she told us she was planning to pursue a career in forensic science and psychology. Her concerns regarding communications were, she told us that that impacted both Taunton Alternative High School and Taunton High School. She felt that there wasn't enough communications between the two schools. She also asked if we could change the current menus that they have being served at the Taunton Alternative High School. Right now, I guess they're just getting sandwiches, not getting any hot meals or any of those things. She advocated for the school computer lab to be upgraded at the Alternative High School. And she mentioned that the staff at the Alternative High School were very welcoming and inviting to the students, and that she felt the students sensed that they could go to anyone in the staff, because everyone in the staff really cared about them. We scheduled another meeting for sometime in April, and that, then we adjourned our meeting. Mr. Delaney was also present at that meeting at the Alternative High School. And later on that evening, we met with the Taunton High School Advisory Board, and myself, Mr. DeMello were present, along with Mrs. Doherty and Mr. DeMello. Also, Mr. Cabral and Mr. Mattos was there. We had four students that we met, Olivia Dias, who is a senior, Aiden Scully, a senior, Jeff Pulowski, a sophomore, and Hector Ponte, a junior. Again, we started off by asking everyone to talk a little bit about themselves and introduce themselves. And then we went into the students' concerns. Pretty much, we laid these meetings up to the students to tell us what they want. So, they talked about some elective courses and the honest course, honest credits. They talked basically, one of it was about the band, I guess, I don't, I wasn't aware of it. I don't know if anyone else was, that they had a parent meeting, and they were told that the students that were taking honest band, band was no longer going to be considered an honest subject. And there was some concern about that because of the amount of work that the students put into the band, and some students may be going on to music for a career. So, that was a concern to them. We also talked about the mural at Taunton High School. We talked about, what else we talked about? They raised concerns relating to the mental health issues that the students are addressing during the pandemic. There was concerns about expansion of civic courses and clubs and activities for students. There was a brief discussions on community service versus mandatory, non-mandatory. Some of the concerns with students work after-school clubs, caring for siblings or family members, and how we would implement it if we ever did do that. Students also discussed the pros and cons of remote and hybrid learning. It was really interesting to hear what they had to say about that. Some of the students really enjoyed the remote portion of it, because they felt that they become, they were more independent learners. And other students felt that they liked to be in the classroom. So, it was like 50/50 of what they liked. And it was kind of interesting to hear that banter back and forth. But I think the biggest thing was that they missed the social interaction with other students and the staff, and the opportunities that they have. We also talked about how they felt that we could help them with remote learning in the future, and how we should, you know, if there was a better way that it could be implemented for the students. And again, we talked about having a meeting again in April, and with that, we adjourned. I don't know if I forgot anything, if Mrs. Fagan or Mr. Pulowski want to add or subtract to it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Almeida. Do we have a motion to accept the report?
I'm moved.
And the record? Motion made and seconded on discussion, Mrs. Doherty?
Just a footnote, Evan Francis was present at that meeting as well. He came in a little late, but he was there.
Oh, I apologize. Yes, he was, he came to the high school. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I don't know if this is appropriate at this time, but I'll say it anyway. I'd like to make a motion to refer the computer lab issue from the Alternative High School to the budget.
Second.
Okay, and that was just from that committee report?
Yes.
That you're referring to, okay. So, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted.
Thank you.
You're welcome. New business, budget meeting with principals. Is that you, Mr. Cabral?
Yeah, I'll take it. So, next Wednesday is when we'd like to have our budget meeting with the principals. So, Mrs. Monahan and Mrs. Rebrick have reached out to all our principals. All of them are able to attend. There are two conflicts, and we've advised them to send their designate to present their budget. So, I'll work with Mrs. Devine tomorrow to reach out to all the school committee members to see the earliest we can begin being mindful that people on the committee have work obligations. So, we'll do that tomorrow and establish a time, and it still gives us plenty of time to post the meeting within 48 hours. So, we'll do that leg ref tomorrow. So, Wednesday, budget meeting via Zoom with our principals.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Okay, any other new business? Seeing, Mr. DeMello?
Mayor, referring back to Mr. Cabral, in the essence of time and planning, would you like to get those times right now from all of us?
Actually, no, it'd be helpful if everybody could put in the chat when they're available. How to be, by the end of the meeting, if you could just look at your calendar before the end of the meeting and put down the earliest you can start on Wednesday, that'll be probably the most efficient way to go about this, Greg.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to unfinished business, Virtual School Committee Retreat, February 24th?
So, I guess I'll take this one, because Mr. Cabral took the last one. So, we're planning on the School Committee Retreat on the 24th, 5 to 7. And right now, everyone should have received an email from the Mrs. Devine and should have proposed a contact with Mr. Bent, and we will be getting back, he will be getting back to each one of you individually, to talk to you individually privately before the retreat. Anything to add to that, Mr. Cabral? I unmute.
If I had a dollar, right, Mr. Souza? So, Mrs., I'll put in the chat, then Wendy will work with you to help coordinate a time to speak to Dr. Benton.
That would be, that's going to be next week. There are certain days next week and time, so it'll be, so we'll get that squared away by the end of the week. So, you'll have, you'll be, you can put that into your schedule for next week.
Bit of information, I think. Point of information, I think Mrs. Devine has already contacted everybody.
Right, but we're just double checking.
All right, very good. Thank you. Action item review, any discussion?
The only, the only one I see is our number four, the fourth one down, to, we can delete it, provide an update on the summer school program for students with special needs. That was the presentation tonight. So I'd just like to strike that one. I'll move, I'll move that we strike it.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. DeMello, do you have your hand up or you're just, no, okay. So motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. All right, Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Mayor. This reverts back to the Finance and Law Agenda and more specifically, item number two, the transportation bids. At this time, I'd like to set forth a motion with the support of my colleagues that we ask for a 2019, 2020 cost of the following. I, I gotta explain this so we understand it better. What the original bid would have cost us for the entire school year, now we've been affected by COVID, what we actually paid to date through the end of FY21 or any carryovers into FY22, what that 30% of the negotiated amount was that we paid extra and any update on PPE and other federal and state monies received by the Boom Bus Company in negotiations that we've had so far. What are we, what are we fighting for, for example? What are we looking to replenish our coffers with? That's in the form of a motion.
Okay, and I think that's, that's fine. It is directly related to the previous conversation. So is there a second on that motion?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Motion made and seconded. No discussion, seeing no discussion. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay, any other unfinished business? Mr. Martin.
I, I just have one question. I mentioned this earlier. We don't have another meeting, regular meeting till March 3rd. I guess this would be either Mr. Cabral or Ms. Monahan. Does that impact Finance and Law warrants at all? The fact that we're going from one month to another?
I'll refer to Mrs. Monahan in the business office.
We have spoken about this and we do feel it would be helpful, but the girls in the office would go ahead and have a larger warrant coming up in March if needed. And so it is up to Mr. Cabral and the committee, but we will do whatever is needed.
I know sometimes the vendors that we're paying, they'll actually have to wait another couple of extra weeks to get paid. And sometimes that presents a problem when they work on, some of them work on a shoestring. So I just wondered if, if maybe we could, if necessary, if you feel necessary, we could simply have a Finance and Law meeting somewhere toward the middle of February. And all we would have to do is have five members available to have a special meeting to approve the Finance and Law Subcommittee Report with one item on the Finance and Law Subcommittee being the warrant. So that's something that you people can decide administratively.
Well, point of information, that's what we've always done in the past.
Well, that's why I brought it up.
Nothing new. I mean, I don't know why we're not doing it.
How about, how about, again, if you are available for the 17th? Can you put it in the chat? And we'll know that we have enough members to have a quorum and vote on the warrant. And then Wendy and I will, or Mrs. Monahan will get out to everyone to let you know that we're doing the bills only if people, if we have enough available.
And the only thing on the agenda for the special meeting would be the Finance and Law Subcommittee Report. That's what we've done in the past. So the other people who can't make the meeting wouldn't feel they're missing something.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Okay, if we're all set with unfinished business, we will move on. There's no press time. Executive session, we'll, we'll need a roll call vote and a vote, on a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation pursuant to exception three. And we will not reconvene in open session.
Motion to.
No, we have to come back in open session.
This says on the count, on the agenda, not to reconvene.
Council will advise us at that time.
Okay, so we may or may not reconvene in open session.
Move the recommendation.
In second.
Motion made and seconded. On a roll call, vote, please, Mrs. Fagan.
Yes, Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Mr. Polowski.
Yes.
Mr. Fury's absent. Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida.
Mrs. Almeida. I'll vote to go into executive session, but we have to come back to the, the table to.
Mr. DeMello.
Yes.
And Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to come out of executive session.
Steve, go ahead, put it, us on, Steve.
Okay.
There's a motion to come out of it in executive session. Can we get a second?
Second. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Do we need that on a roll call?
Yes.
Okay, on a roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan. You're on mute right now, please.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Mr. Polowski.
Yes.
Mr. Fury's absent. Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida.
Yes.
Mr. DeMello. And Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Thank you. There were no votes taken in executive session, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Move.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Have a great day, everyone. Stay safe, please, everyone.